Came down to see what was up here. I tried to live my life.
Don't overdo it.
Just remember, open air sees what he just did.
That's okay.
Hey, hey, Joe. Friday night's supposed to be seventy-four degrees.
I don't want to get virus.
I think Sunday turns to a chill.
Oh, I'll take twenty-four.
Saturday is first round out of the first year verdicts in the Buckeyes.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. It's time to call our October fourth, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Whitehall City Council to order for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask every, uh, everyone to please stand for mobile assignments or remain standing for the call. Thank you.
Congratulations, citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Hannah?
Here.
Bailey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
President Graham?
Present. All right, next we have our approval of minutes for the September twentieth, two thousand and sixteen agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve September twentieth minutes.
Second. Motion by Ms. Coniston, and second by Mr. Tanner for approval of the September twenty, September twentieth, two thousand and sixteen minutes. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson? Yes. Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. All right, the minutes have been approved. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I enjoy the event. My address is forty-nine eighty-five. I haven't heard my phone title. Good evening, council. How are you? Good. I am here because I'm due to go into, before you talk about the Franklin County Community Community Council that's going to be held here in Whitehall on October twenty-second, which is Saturday from nine to one. This community council is going to be made up of all of our Franklin County governmental agencies. We currently have about three hundred participants registered right now. We're going to be discussing, um, every government agency is going to share with the nonprofits, faith leaders, and community leaders on the services that we provide to your constituents around Franklin County. So, many people know that I'm in Franklin County Government Services. They, you know, they know, okay, we provide food assistance, cash assistance, you know, publicly funded childcare Medicaid. But what they don't know is that we provide thirty, we put thirty-three dollars in contracts on the streets to government, to nonprofit agencies to assist in providing services to individuals who need it. So, um, this is going to be a very, um, big conference. We're going to talk about homelessness as it relates to Franklin County. We're going to talk about, um, um, mental health services as it relates to persons of Franklin County. We're also going to talk about, um, reentry services as it relates to Franklin County. And then there is a youth needs assessment that we, um, funded. And what that youth needs assessment does is it looked, it took a look at our county and it was new, youth need to be successful as far as thriving, healthy, and succeeding schools. So, we want to share that information with, with the community as well. Again, this conference is going to be made up of, um, the registrants are made up of nonprofit organizations, faith leaders. Um, I would like to personally invite you to attend as much of the conference as possible. When I represent, um, you know, even in my capacity, when I represent the community, I represent Whitehall. So, I would like to see my Whitehall family here as much as possible to come out there, be there for Whitehall as much as possible. Because I think we have a great model here as it relates to community, and relationships, and families, and business thriving, and strong government. And I think this is an opportunity for us to shine. So, I would admit, if you can only attend for an hour, that's fine. I would like to personally invite you to attend. Also, on that day, and I don't know if any of you know it, but you're keeping track of this, but in twenty-twenty, the state has managed that every learning, early learning center is to be stepped up to quality certified. What that means is that's a certification process. You have to have the certification in order to continue to receive your publicly funded childcare dollars, which is what we distribute. If twenty-twenty was today, twenty-three thousand, my thirty-three thousand students, um, children that received publicly funded childcare would lose their spots. So, it is my job right now to get out and run the public as much as possible for every home care provider, every learning center to say, you need to engage in this process. Because what we're finding out is you just, some people just like to watch kids, but they don't engage in the business model of the, of the process of running your business. So, it's my job to get out there and let them know, you have to engage in this process if you want to continue to receive publicly funded childcare dollars. Again, um, thank you, Mayor. She's going to be on our opening on that day. But I am one of you, and I'd like to be meeting you as possible to show you all, to people without vision, kind of brighter than we all about.
And what's that day again?
It's October twenty-second. What's the Saturday?
Where's that? I cut through the line.
Whitehall, Yearling High School.
Okay.
You've got to deal with Whitehall Yearling High School.
I'm going to walk.
You should.
Yes, nine, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for poll public? All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. And we'll begin with administration of financial management, Chairperson Taylor.
Thanks, President. Administration of financial management did meet last week. I'm in a strong file. We discussed several initiatives, which were supplemental and appropriate transfers. I think we had two resolutions that have been announced that we'll also be introducing tonight. Other than that, our members are on the next week.
All right, next is community engagement. Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. Presley. Community engagement met last week. We're going to talk online. We will meet again next week in the afternoon sometime after six-thirty.
All right, thank you. Community standards and enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community standards and enforcement also met last Tuesday. I'm in a strong file. We'll begin next Tuesday sometime after six-thirty.
Thank you, sir. Economic development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development also met last Tuesday. I'm in a strong file. And we had ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-sixteen, and resolution sixty-four, twenty-sixteen of the celebration this evening. And we'll meet again next week, or next Tuesday sometime after six-thirty.
All right, thank you. Infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure maintenance and services also met last week. And, um, we discussed, uh, resolution sixty-one, which comes up on file, deals with special assessments, um, for property maintenance. And, uh, you have to keep that kind of down to the other chair of Franklin County. So, getting it up tonight. And, uh, we'll meet sometime in the back next week.
Thank you, sir. Public safety, Chairperson Staley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety did meet last Tuesday. We discussed ordinance one oh one with administration. Our minutes are in place. We will meet again next Tuesday.
All right, thank you, sir. Parks and recreation, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and recreation also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We actually discussed, uh, construction of the new basketball course that we want to report control of, um, approved funding for this. I was over there last week, and I saw where we started doing the patchwork. Unfortunately, we had like a monsoon for about three days last week, so it didn't stop. But I spoke over there at the day looking, and I saw that they did a little bit more. Uh, the hoops have been ordered, the poles, the backboard, and the nets, kind of like a hopefully, thank the mayor for going over that. We'll meet again next weekend after six-thirty.
All right, thank you, sir. That concludes our standing committee reports. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our Mayor, Ms. Kent Hager.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to remind everyone tomorrow about the, uh, the community discussion regarding the fireworks celebration event. That will be at the high school auditorium, uh, tomorrow at six-thirty. So, please, if you want to find out, uh, about this and about what the changes will be, I invite everyone to come to that. Also, I'm very happy to say that we rebid the splash pad project last week, and, and it's, the bids came in under, so we're good to go. And, uh, we'll be working on that. And, uh, the timeline looks good as well. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, next we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Vittles.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of the council, as well as public. Thank you for coming out this evening. Uh, we'd like to also announce again that October is domestic violence awareness month. So, as you look around the city, you will see, uh, purple ribbons, uh, that have been placed up. We'd like to thank the public service department for placing those ribbons up. Um, domestic violence is not just a battered woman issue. Domestic violence affects every single person, including children. Franklin County alone processed in two thousand and fifteen over four thousand five hundred domestic violence cases in two thousand and fifteen. Out of those four thousand five hundred cases, I am pleased to announce, even though we do have numbers in Whitehall, we have approximately about one hundred and seventy-five of those cases were Whitehall cases. Um, nevertheless, I would like to announce to the public as well as to city council, there are help and there's resources that are available. The, um, domestic violence hotline is easily called. It's a toll-free number. It's one eight hundred seven nine nine SAFE. Again, that's one eight hundred seven nine nine S A F Z N Frank E. I would also like to announce, uh, for the month of September with respect to Mayor's Court, we processed, uh, we processed one hundred and ninety cases. Out of those one hundred and ninety cases, only fifty of those were Whitehall residents. I was curious to see what our year-to-date numbers were with respect to arrests versus state cases. So, I was, um, able to speak with our crime analyst. And thank you, Mayor, for, for putting, uh, crime analyst with our, with our, uh, Whitehall Police Department. And I am, uh, pleased to announce, uh, that out of, in two thousand and fifteen, or two thousand and sixteen to date, there have been two thousand six hundred and forty-two arrests in the city of Whitehall. Now, this number, out of those two thousand six hundred and forty-two arrests, only eight hundred and seventeen were Whitehall residents. So, when you're thinking about that, but there's a difference between arrests as well and, and those that are actually charged. So, I asked her to tell me who actually were charged and who actually were indicted. And out of those two thousand six hundred and forty-two arrests, only twenty-six were indicted. And out of those twenty-six, only four were Whitehall residents. So, when you start thinking about the numbers and you start telling, um, our residents about the safety of Whitehall and the people that live amongst us, we are, we are a very safe city. And that means that, um, I am tickled to announce just, uh, a contingency and a, and a program that is coming through the, through the Mayor's Court, through the city attorney's office. Um, and I just got confirmation right before this meeting, but the Columbus Urban League has made a commitment to come to our Mayor's Court. I was expecting them to come on just one Mayor's Court per month, but they've made a commitment to come every Tuesday from eight-thirty to eleven o'clock to do workforce development and workforce development training to individuals that need it that come through our doors. Now, the great thing about it is, and I would also like to commend our director, uh, for Franklin County Job and Safety Services, who just happens to be a very beautiful and, and very attractive, uh, person, uh, for, for putting a mandate on, on these, those types of agencies to not just think about Columbus, but also think about the suburbs, and think about suburbs that actually need that. Because I believe that that relationship and that mandate that she put on that agency opened the door and paved the way for, for the urban league to be receptive to actually come to our Mayor's Court. Now, think about the trailblazing opportunity that this is. We're not sending individuals to them. They're coming here, and they're setting up shop to be a resource for not only the individuals that come through our doors, but here's the added benefit. You can tell our residents that there will be a workforce development person on site in the city of Whitehall every Tuesday from eight-thirty to eleven o'clock. So, they don't have to be a defendant in our court. They can come, they can meet with a person, and what they'll get, they'll get soft skills, the resume writing, personal branding, and here's the big thing, they'll get lifestyle training. So, that the decisions that they make are good decisions, and we can start closing doors and closing these pathways to, to bad thinking. And hopefully, at the end of the year, maybe I'll be able to announce, we only had fifty cases that were processed in Mayor's Court. How about that? So, that's the announcement from the city attorney's office. Um, I'd just like to thank you all for your support. I'm just so excited about the urban league coming. And again, I thank you, Joy, for, for bringing jobs. Because, oh, oh, I forgot to say, that a part of their job training is they make this commitment that every participant will be linked to a career coach and subsequently linked to employment. That's their commitment. So, they will be here in our Whitehall Mayor's Court every Tuesday. We're just working on the details, but if I can get them here next Tuesday, then they'll be here. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and I have a question or two. And I, I have to excuse myself because, uh, hopefully you all excuse me. I'm not, uh, the type of person that looks at Facebook at the end, you know, the white, I must say, not even Whitehall website. My wife does everything that's on all this stuff. So, I don't have to. Uh, so, my question is, the information that you give to us, you know, it, it, safety is a big deal here in Columbus, especially from all the comments my wife gives me about the spec, Whitehall and, and all this stuff that goes on everywhere. Is that information available on our website? And if not, do you think that that will be beneficial?
I just started talking right now, so it was a meeting.
Okay. Because, you know, I think people have a lot of misconceptions. We need to change people's minds. And we can do that with facts and figures that don't lie. And then maybe we can make people understand that it's, it's, we don't have the crime here that everybody thinks we have. And I think it will be very beneficial, you know? That would be nice if that was on there every month. And at the end of the year, you say, okay, here's what happened, you know?
Which part of this have you put up on the board?
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from our city auditor, Mr. David Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little tired of the fact that I'm here. This is God. I decided it was real hard. I'm, I'm, I'm.
It took me kind of two years. Yeah. All right. Uh, thank you, sir. We'll move on to our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Council. I also have no official report tonight.
All righty. We'll move on now to, uh, this, uh, following officials' reports that have been filed in the council office. We have the treasurer's investment report for April two thousand and sixteen, and we have the division of fire overtime report for August two thousand and sixteen. And under communications, petitions, and claims, uh, we have one item listed on the agenda this evening, and we received the following additional items since the agenda was prepared. They, it is the Parks and Recreation Special Meeting Agenda for October fourth, two thousand and sixteen, at six o'clock P M. at Whitehall Community Parks. Those are all the communications, petitions, and claiming claims. We'll move on now to the all-important verification of copies. And Ms. Frymer, please call the roll on whether each member of the council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. All right. So, we'll move on to our legislation issues for the evening. Under third reading, there are no, there is no legislation for third reading. Under second reading, there is also no legislation for second reading. So, we'll begin with our first reading ordinances. And we have ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen, approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of ten thousand dollars from the city hall, building lot repair and maintenance account to the fire department building repair and maintenance account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-four, two thousand and sixteen, with the special authority.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, and second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen. Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance ninety-five, twenty sixteen, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the building and lot maintenance expense account to the general fund and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in the general fund to the building repair and maintenance account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-five, two thousand and sixteen, with the suspension of all rules.
Second. Uh, motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-five, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? I might add that this is a companion piece of legislation for, uh, ordinance ninety-four, twenty sixteen, which we just passed. So, Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-five, twenty sixteen. Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance ninety-five, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-five, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Moving on, we have ordinance ninety-six, twenty sixteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the inspection deposit fund to the inspection deposit account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-six, two thousand and thirteen, with the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-six, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-six, twenty sixteen. Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance ninety-six, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-six, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is ninety-seven, twenty sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute individual on behalf of the city, a development agreement by and between the city and Harton Ohio Family Health Centers to enable the redevelopment of property within the city and the creation of jobs at the redeveloped property and appropriated funds generated from the main Hamilton incentive district to make a job creation incentive payment under that agreement.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-seven, twenty sixteen, and with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrison, and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty sixteen.
Move to the other.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance ninety-seven, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-seven, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next is ordinance ninety-eight, twenty sixteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the transfer expense account, approving a fund transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from the transfer expense account to the accrued benefit reserve fund.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-eight, two thousand and sixteen, with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-eight, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-eight, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance ninety-eight, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-eight, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next on the agenda is ordinance ninety-nine, twenty sixteen. I got a problem with this because I can't read it. Please, let me see somebody else's. Oh, okay, yeah, give me that. Approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from the accrued benefit reserve fund to the accrued be, that's not it, is it? Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, I can't tell from here.
Right, that's it.
Okay. Uh, let me start over. Approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from the accrued benefit reserve fund to the accrued benefit reserve expense account and declaring an emergency.
So, you want to read this one too?
No, I got, I have that one.
That was correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes. So, I can't read this one. It doesn't have any innovation.
No.
You know, it's missing, the agenda, we're missing a few words.
Mr. President, I introduce ordinance ninety-nine, two thousand and sixteen, with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance ninety-nine, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-nine, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance ninety-nine, twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymer, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next is ordinance one hundred, twenty sixteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of six hundred fourteen dollars seventy-six cents from various, from unappropriated monies in the Wimpy Fund to various accounts in the Wimpy Fund and declaring an emergency. And that one's being read by Title Holman. Wimpy Fund. That's right. That's right. That's as close as I can get to it. All right. Moving on, we have ordinance one zero one twenty sixteen, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of nine thousand dollars for previously unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust fund to the law enforcement trust set aside forfeiture expense account and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce the ordinance one one two thousand sixteen with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh one twenty sixteen. Questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason this is being passed by is just to move monies for the assistance of retired police officers.
No. Not this one. But this one helps with narcotics investigations. So it's really important.
This one is important, yes. Very important.
All right. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh one twenty sixteen.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of ordinance one oh one twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Ordinance one oh one twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolution sixty-one twenty sixteen. It's letting special assessments for property maintenance at several locations in the city of Whitehall, Ohio. And certifying such cost in Franklin County Auditor to be assessed against each, against such property and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution sixty-one two thousand sixteen with the suspension of all rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gray and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution sixty-one twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-one twenty sixteen.
Move to the ballot.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gray and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of resolution sixty-one twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Resolution sixty-one twenty sixteen has been adopted. We now have resolution sixty-two twenty sixteen. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce our resolution sixty-two two thousand sixteen with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of rules, all rules in fact, on resolution sixty-two twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-two twenty sixteen. Move to the ballot.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of resolution sixty-two twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Resolution sixty-two twenty sixteen has been adopted. Next, we have resolution sixty-three twenty sixteen. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce our resolution sixty-three two thousand sixteen with the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution twenty, excuse me, sixty-three twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Well, the rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-three twenty sixteen. That's right. Move to the ballot.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of resolution sixty-three twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Resolution sixty-three twenty sixteen has been adopted. It's in between this one and the next one. It says, "I am not a robot," so that's why I changed things up a bit. Usually I fail that little test and I have to do it three or four times. All right. Next, we have resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a payroll incentive grant agreement with Breaking Point Recovery Center of Ohio to operate a medical clinic at forty forty East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen and the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mr. Bailey for introduction and suspension of all the rules on resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. The rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen.
Move to the ballot.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mr. Bailey for adoption of resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Resolution sixty-four twenty sixteen has been adopted. Those are all the items of legislation we had this evening. It's our second opportunity for the whole public. Very much would like to come forward. We'll have it in three minutes. No rushing, no pushing. All right, we'll move on into community day work.
Good evening. I am not going to switch for everything but all the highlights. As we know, tomorrow at six thirty, we will be there having a discussion about next year's birthday July at the school. So we'll be there at six thirty on the twelfth, next Wednesday, it's the homecoming parade and bonfire. This will be pushing that out, so the parade starts at Irwin Elementary.